And this thing.
We'll have to wait. Maria's gonna report it too over there. So she'll be in here a second. Do you think this is not?
I'm going until she turns on there.
Oh, I don't know. In the microphones? She's still trying to organize.
A call to the meeting of City of Plymouth Joint City Council Planning Commission Special Meeting, Monday, the 12th, 2022. Pursuant to Assembly Bill AB 361, the meeting will be held in person and via teleconference electronically. In-person participation by the public is permitted. Remote and electronic public participation is also available. Members of the public participating electronically via this link and wishing to speak may do so during public comment by using the raised hand feature in the Zoom webinar. When dialing into Zoom at the phone number listed above, on the phone use star nine to raise and lower your hand. Use star six to mute and unmute the phone. You can submit a written public comment prior to the meeting by emailing your comment to the Deputy City Clerk before five o'clock PM on the day of the meeting. Email public comments will be distributed to City Council and made part of the official minutes. Uh, roll call, please.
For City Council, Councilmember White. Not available. Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilmember Kleinfilter. Vice Mayor Sim.
Here.
Mayor Ackerman. Commissioners. Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner Gomes. Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner Sullivan. And Commissioner Clappar.
Thank you. I will leave us off in the legislature. legislature to the United States of America. I'd like to make the approval of the Joint City Council Planning Commission Special Meeting Agenda of December 12th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Councilmember White. Councilmember, Councilmember McLaughlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Kleinfilter. Vice Mayor Sim.
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman. And for the Commissioners. Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner Gomes. Commissioner Kozart. Commissioner Sullivan. Commissioner Clappar.
Yes. We don't, we don't have a floor. I'd like to, uh, open up the public comment. A, a special meeting, citizens wishing to address the City Council may do so at this time concerning any matter on the agenda. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the City Council and Planning Commission is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it has been demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or an urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of this agenda. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make comment?
No raised hands at this time.
Anybody in the room, in the, in the chamber like to make comment? Okay, let's, uh, move on to the rigor item workshop to review countywide six cycle draft housing element. And I will turn this over to Erin.
Thank you. So this is, as the Vice Mayor said, a public workshop to take comments to review the county's six cycle draft housing element. See that? So here's a, here's a brief overview of the timeline of the housing element and the work that has been done on it over the last year. We've had, the county has actually acted as the lead in this and has been using their grant money from the REAP grant to actually help pay for the housing element. In the previous housing element, the fifth cycle housing element, Amador County was one of the only counties in the state to do a joint housing element. And at that time and currently, it still makes sense for the cities in the county and unincorporated areas to do a continued joint housing element. I was not around or did not work on the fifth cycle element, but from the feedback I received, the HCD, which is the California State Department of Housing and Community Development, was very pleased that the jurisdictions fanned together to do this document. So that is why we went for it again within this cycle, working together as a county to do it. So as you can see, this process started, uh, and earlier this year in the spring, and we held workshops. The consultant that was brought on board did a lot of background work on, they together, the main components, components of the background report of the housing element, and I'll go into that in more detail. We talked to stakeholders, took community outreach or did outreach to community members and got input there. And then over the last few months, they were putting together the draft housing element. And right now, we are in the 30-day review period. That date, that time has actually been extended through about the middle of January for the jurisdictions to take comments from the community. Once that, those comments have been received and incorporated into the draft housing element, the whole element will go to HCD, Housing and Community Development, for 90 days to be reviewed. There's typically a back and forth with the jurisdictions and the state during that time to make changes to the housing element, to make sure that we have all the programs and state law in there that is required. Once HCD is satisfied, it will come back to the individual jurisdictions or planning commission to review with recommendation to the city council. And the city council at each jurisdiction is the approving authority to adopt the housing element. So some housing element basics. The housing element is part of the general plan. Each community has to have a general plan, and it's a blueprint for how the city is going to grow over a 20, 20-year period, approximately 20 years. And the housing element is the only element within the general plan that must be certified by HCD. It must be updated every eight years. It lays out the housing policies and identifies goals and programs for facilitating housing during the housing period or as HCD calls them cycles. So this is the sixth cycle. And each, even though we have a joint document with the other jurisdictions, we will each individually adopt our own housing element. And if you've had some time to look through it, you can see that there are individual sections for each jurisdiction. So the main component in, in this kind of the meat and potatoes that in the housing element is the housing plan, and that's the goals, the policies and the housing programs to identify the needs and constraints during the upcoming housing cycle. So there, one of the main goals is to ensure that there is adequate land to meet the housing needs. And there's programs to facilitate affordable housing, market rate housing, especially needs housing, to remove and mitigate any governmental constraints on the development of housing, and then also to continue to have opportunities for fair housing. So like I said, there's a few different components, and one is the background report. And this is where we kind of review all the information that the city has, see, and, you know, what kind of housing do we have now? What does our population look like? What is the income of the population that we have? What kind of housing types? What are our biggest housing needs and some of those barriers to meet those housing needs? And, and also then an evaluation of our previous housing element, which was from 2014 to 2019. And then each jurisdiction has its own annex within this big document that is jurisdiction specific, lays out your available sites for housing and additional programs and policies and, and specific information, you know, what is, what is the cost to develop in Plymouth versus the cost to develop in Sutter Creek or Ione? And what constraints may there be in Plymouth? Or how, you know, what have we done to make things easier for housing in Plymouth? So that's all in the individual annex. Okay, so planning for housing in Amador County. And some of these, the next few slides are a lot of statistics. So I tried to highlight the Plymouth specific ones. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask them. But so here we have the housing unit trends. And you can see that our population, along with pretty much the population of the county, has remained almost the same since 1991. There's been slight, slight growth, but not, not a ton in households, not in people. So you can see we have here in Plymouth about 425 households. Again, Plymouth is, let me see if I can make this a little bit more. Yes, Claire's gonna get, okay. So in Plymouth, this is our housing types, our stock comparison. We here in Plymouth have probably, it looks like the lowest percentage of single-family homes of all of our homes. And we're one of the larger percentages of mobile homes in the community. So and you have a handout so you can see on there. I know it's not all that clear. It's hard to read up there. Again, here's some more statistics about our households and the characteristics of them versus the rest of the cities in the county. So our, in Plymouth, there's larger households, we're about the middle for median income. And the jobs to housing ratio is, is, looks like it's higher than some of the other jurisdictions. And I was looking up what that was and what, what, what did we want that number to look like? And actually, 1.5 is what they consider to be a pretty healthy jobs to housing ratio. So it means there's about one full-time and one part-time job per household in the community. So that is a good thing there.
Any questions during this or?
Yeah.
I'm really curious of the best statistic because I want to go to Plymouth. There's like the job center of the county. Like why, why are we so, so far ahead of public jurisdictions?
I had the exact same thought when I was looking at some of that information. It was wondering, you know, because there's the county seat in the county administrative buildings, hospitals in Jackson, you would assume that there's more jobs there. So that might be one that we'll follow up with the consultants on because it doesn't seem, no, you would think that there, because there really are not many job providers within the, within the city boundaries. So, but we'll.
Unless, unless it's a ratio.
Unless it's ratio. So what with our houses, but we.
Well, as you mentioned, too, if Plymouth has the fewest single-family units and the most mobile units, why doesn't it have the highest rents?
Yeah. And I mean, and then, so that is, in gathering that information and, you know, trying to forecast and, and make sure that the housing provided types is met, that is, that is a constraint that the city is going to need to understand and overcome. Why are we having a few a single, you know, is our, are the rents here in Plymouth do not fit with the income levels, the population? And is that a constraint, rental housing for the community? So I'm gonna make a note to check on that. Where are all these jobs? So here is ownership. The, the home prices in Amador have, have slowly increased over the last 10 years. The median home price in the county is $418,000. That a person to be able to afford that house needs to be able, the household needs to make an approximate $81,000 a year. Then you can see the last statistic is an interesting one. You know, it's almost, it's almost doubled in that 10-year time. What you need to make to be able to afford that median home price. And you can see Plymouth is, home prices are, have historically been higher than other jurisdictions within the county. Here are rental rates. Again, some of the highest rental rates, the the dark line on the bottom is, is a four-bedroom, you know, and they're saying it's an average rent of about $2,000 a month for a four-bedroom. You can see, it's, it's for the most part on track with the rest of the jurisdictions in the county, a little bit higher in rental rates. So like I mentioned before, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, is the, is the organization that's responsible for kind of making sure that the state is providing housing for the people that live in the state of California, and also making sure that each jurisdiction or region is, is taking on their fair share of housing. And so the way they do that is by doing a regional housing needs allocation, RENA. And what that does is they divide up what they predict will be the housing needs for the state in the, in the coming years, you know, in the coming cycle, and then divide that up into regions and then, and then break it down even more into counties, and then the, then breaking it down even more into jurisdictions. So the next slide, it shows what are the county, Amador County's fair share of housing, their RENA number is 741. And, and that number is then broken down into income levels of very low, low, moderate and above moderate income. And so you can see on this chart how then the state breaks them up into those income levels, what percentage needs to be very low, low, moderate and above moderate. One other component of a housing element is an inventory of sites. In this housing element, the consultants reviewed both approved projects, pending projects that possibly will be approved, and then vacant sites that can't accommodate housing in this next housing cycle. And they took that number into consideration when determining what are the needs, what each community needs to do in the next cycle to accommodate their fair share of housing. And so here are the RENA allocations for the cities within the county. You can see the city of Plymouth was given 30, I believe, during the last housing element cycle, our number was eight. So we, everyone's numbers went up a lot here. The city of Plymouth also is the only city within the county that we have a shortfall, which means we have projects and sites available for housing at a moderate and above moderate income rates, but we don't have them available for low and very low income. And one of the ways that the, the state determines whether a site is available for moderate to, or I'm sorry, low or very low is by size. And so in the allowable density. So it's, it's typically smaller lots that have a higher density, and they're assuming 15 units per acre for the very low and low income. Those are the default density assumptions that are made. This notes, it's kind of hard to read, so I have it going up on the next slide. But this is our current, this is our current zoning map with some pending and approved projects, which are the hatched ones. You can see, if I could stand up. Pending approved are, this is like Freelich Ranch, which is pending, obviously not approved. These are also some of Zinfandel that's approved but not built yet. So those are the pending approved projects. And then we have opportunity zones or opportunity sites. I zoomed in on the next slide and showed that so you could get a better idea. And this is where I think it's important to take some comments or questions and discussion on this because this may be area you would want to make the changes to. So what, where you can see the red arrows, those are what have been identified. That is our opportunity sites, a total of about three acres that could be rezoned for low and very low income. Not zoned particularly for low and very low income, but rezoned to a higher density residential that then would accommodate low and very low income. One thing to remember with housing elements is it has all these things in it that you are supposed to do. And so much of it is market and developer driven. The city is not responsible for actually constructing any of these units. You know, the cities aren't in business to, to build houses. We facilitate the construction of them, get people through the development process, make sure that we're removing constraints where we can to facilitate certain types of development. And so through my experience with all housing elements, you know, people see these numbers. What, how are we supposed to build, how is the city supposed to build the 30 houses? Well, we, the city are not. We just need to, to try to accommodate that number within the community. So by re-zoning these two fractals, the one, the top one is zoned village commercial and the one on the highway is zoned suburban commercial, which do allow residential, but we would have, the, the proposal in the housing element would be to rezone those sites to suburban residential so that they could, or, or high-density residential, which we have a high-density residential in a district in our code, yet we have no sites zoned that. So like I said, this may be a spot of discussion. Those might not be the best opportunities for it. There may be other opportunities within the community. Does anyone have any questions? It's confusing. I don't.
How does the city encourage these projects? You said about the fact that we can't build?
Yes.
But we can encourage. Somebody should push this thing forward.
Yeah, actually, I'll kind of get into that in the next slide. So we can always come back for more questions.
Are those sites that are proposed for parent security privately owned?
Yes, privately only make it. Yeah, I mean, some may. I mean, that was, that was an issue that the city had in the previous housing element cycle. They picked random sites, they re-zoned them, and then they somehow got unrezoned. And, you know, some property owners, I don't, I don't want to be re-zoned. And some, maybe this property that they think they're going to sell see, you know, potential benefit for that. So so the housing plan is also, is how, how we encourage people and how we facilitate the construction of these housing units and the protection of special populations within the city. And so it's the goals and policies and the programs to address our housing needs. And within them, there are different programs and that the city will be implementing or putting together or working with the county together to, to help to facilitate the construction of these, whether it is continuing to streamline process for them, giving you know, helping with development impact fees, things like that. So I'll, I'm not gonna go through all of the programs because there's a bunch of them and they're in the, in the document. But a few of them is the, to continue with the countywide housing working group, I think this is really important. Each city within the county, they're, they're small, small little communities, and the county as a whole kind of does operate as a county. And if we continue to work together as a countywide housing working group, there's opportunities for the city to get credit for RENA elsewhere. For example, we were working with other communities in the county through a program called There's No Place Like Home, and that is there's funding available to do low-income and supportive type housing within the community and. low-income and supportive type housing within the community. And our question was, if we pool, you know, each jurisdiction is given a pot of money, not enough money to actually make anything happen, but if we pool our money together and 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 are able to construct something that meets these these this population group's needs, will even if it's built in an unincorporated area, will the city still get some of its RENA credits? And the answer is yes. So that's why I think e- especially here where we're, we don't have the sites zoned for all of our RENA needs. This is a, this is a big opportunity for us to continue to stay in compliance with our housing element um and and be creative and work together, pool money, actually make things happen versus everyone just having a little bit of money and not being able to complete anything with it. So um like it says, provide some cost savings and efficiencies. Uh, and that that would also help with staffing. You know, these jurisdictions are not flush with planners. So we can work together to have someone come in and help get all jurisdictions on the same page or get policies and goals programs in place together, save some money. Program two, housing element monitoring and annual reporting. Each year, the city does do an annual progress report and the city currently is up to date on that. So just continuing to to do those. Uh, those are required for a lot of grant funding too. So it's important to remember to 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 keep up on those. The next is adequate sites. So like I said, Plymouth needs to rezone at least two acres, including one acre in a higher um highest resource area. Then program four, accessory dwelling units, to encourage the construction of those. And the city actually does have a grant, some grant money for the creation and implementation of the accessory dwelling unit program. Just kind of picking some highlights on here.
Is the definition is the highest resource area?
That is, I I believe it's areas like along the the highway, where there's potential for like public transportation too.
Erin, when when she asked a question, or we do, can you reiterate it so that people at home know?
Okay.
The question was, thank you.
Program eleven is, this is something we don't have a ton of, but the multifamily is preserving that. Again, providing hu- housing opportunities for people for for different population groups, for people who prefer, you know, multifamily housing versus single-family home. And just a a note on these, I think a lot of people would look at this and say, well, how is Little Plymouth, you know, why or why? Why does Plymouth have to do this? And a lot of this is just, these are policies and programs that are handed down by the state. And Plymouth has to do it, Los Angeles has to do it, San Francisco has to do it. And so um it's, you know, obviously the the state doesn't have a perfect system of making sure everything is possible for all different types of jurisdictions of people of a thousand and, you know, communities of millions. So uh so when you see some of these, oh, but it it does kind of get broken down into bite-sized pieces. So it so it is achievable by the smaller jurisdictions. And then let's see. One of the when updating the housing element, there will be updates required to the development code or or zoning ordinance. Um, a lot of that is incorporating things that are already state law and that our code currently doesn't have in there, but we do have to default to it. So if you're seeing change things in here, where it says update municipal code, it's the city is most likely currently already implementing those. It's just not in our our actual code. So so it may seem like a lot of changes to the code, but it is not as many as we as that looks. Um, I see program nineteen as a big question mark or should have a big asterisk next to it, seeing as water is a very hot topic in the infrastructure, water. And wastewater infrastructure is a pretty hot topic here in Amador County. And that could have major potential on redevelopment that's happening in the county. And that would, that would be another county-wide problem if the water is not available and the infrastructure cannot support the potential development within the county. So again, right now, we are in our public review period, which will go through the ninth. Once that is wrapped up and comments are incorporated, it will go back to HCD for review. The um during this public review period though, sorry, before the end of it, uh, before J D R nine, there will be a second meeting held here in Plymouth to collect more comments if there are. So there will be another opportunity for people to participate. Once we have gone back and forth with HCD and HCD decides the housing element in in compliance, they will go back to the planning commission and for recommendation to the city council. At that time, also, there will be an environmental document that will go with it. So we have to see what potential impacts there will be from adopting this housing element. And that would all go to the city council at a public hearing for review and adoption then. So uh, we've also gotten word that comments can be reviewed or taken in through this HCD ninety-day review period. We understand, like I said, there's a lot of back and forth that happens during that period between the state and the jurisdictions, or in this case, the consultant who's working for the jurisdictions. So this is not the only opportunity to continue to put in um public comments. Yeah. And again, here is opportunities of um or ways to put in comments and the county housing element has, or the county planning has a housing element update web page two that has information, has information about the previous workshops that were held, has links to everyone within the jurisdictions, meetings like this, and it's a good way to stay updated on what's going on. So do you have any questions? Yes.
Uh, has there been any building uh in the last fifteen, twenty years based on this type of program? Uh, did you know, are they tracked that?
Thank you.
Yeah. So yes, if you were, in in the housing element, there is a review of our previous housing element. And it does talk about some of the the wins, if you want to call them, of implementation of our previous housing element, how um like an energy action plan or assisting one of these special populations to be able to rehab a house or things like that. So the majority of our units though built in the last ten years have been above moderate income units. The majority of our construction has been in Zimphendale and based on lot size and sale price and house size, that automatically puts those in above moderate units. But there is a review of in of the previous housing element and where where there have been successes.
Yes, so I know that one of the recommendations in the draft plan is to work with nonprofit developers who use, you know, how do you explain it more? People, but do we have any of those?
So just to repeat, the question is, one of the um programs in in the housing element is to work with nonprofits that help special needs housing or housing groups like low income. And you're asking if there are those organizations within the county? Yes, there are. I know, for example, right now in the city of Sutter Creek, they are working with an organization that is building you know, a nonprofit that's building low-income housing. So there are organizations. Um, and if they're not maybe county-specific, they are at least coming to work in this county.
Pretty much it?
Yeah.
Okay. And during the meeting? Okay.